That's good. Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Corporate Services Committee. It is Tuesday, the 18th of June. Item 99/24. Does anybody have any declarations of any disclose pecuniary interests, please? None, thank you. Do we have any apologies for absence, Karen?
Apologies received on Council.
Council, lovely, thank you. I think everybody else is here, which is brilliant. Thank you for making the effort. Item 101, minutes from our meeting held on the 28th of May. They've been to full council and being approved. Are you all happy that they are a true record, please? You aren't here. These of you that weren't here, are you? Thank you very much.
But I'm now allowed to vote.
Yeah, I can't hold you back. Thank you. Item 102, we've got the approval of payments. They were circulated in advance, as usual. Alan, anything of particular note in the approval of payments today? Does anybody have any questions about any of the payments? No?
No, thank you.
On that basis, I assume you're all happy to approve them. Can I have a proposal in second, please? Terry Lamb proposing. Doug seconding, thank you very much. Item 103, login and reporting of complaints. To note any complaints received since the previous meeting.
There are none.
Shocking. Not a single complaint?
That's a Freedom of Information request.
Wow. No complaints must be good news. Item 104, Communications Officer Report. Anthony Martin, Hazel, for circulating your report in advance. Can you just take us through it?
Yep, so it's a walk-on out to everybody. So we're just looking at branding guidelines for across council, really. We're looking at the posters and print communications. And I'm working with Alan on the team downstairs to make sure that it's a more uniform approach for all of our marketing releases and that they're going through a more rigorous sign-up process. We've developed guidelines for the email signatures, so they're all uniform standard now. Everybody should have the same information on them, which is making it clearer for residents to get the information. In terms of press releases, we've had four that have gone out. Obviously, the Unlocking Potential Fund ones, Thetford in Bloom launch, the D-Day, National and our internal ones as well. And all of them are listed on our website if anyone needs them. We've been using our social media pages for lots of different posts. I've highlighted it here in the report, particularly the town teamwork. We've been tackling a lot of areas around the town and highlighting areas of concern that residents have come to us with and what we've done about it. So kind of you told us and we've done. To meet the D-Day commemorations, we're publicized as they happen. That got really good responses from people. We also published the role of honour on our Facebook page for everybody that was fallen in World War Two, which from Thetford, which obviously gave people the information that weren't able to attend the events as well. Continental Market, obviously, was very successful again. Carried on postal and that was well attended. And the education team are continuing to work with schools and we're making sure the posts go out to highlight that great work that's going on. Recently, they've had a visit from Drake Porumry, the Budapest trip that went out today. And they've also been doing some work with Thetford Academy and Thetford Grammar School as part of the D-Day things, as well as some other porumry. We've also had a visiting group from France. There was a group of students that came over, or I think it was for their pen pals for grammar school. They contacted us and said they had a day, they needed to fill with film. And they just said, is there anything we could advise in the town that they could come and do? So we said, well, come along, we'll give you a tour of the town. And the team worked really well with them. And it was great to highlight that partnership. And hopefully, if they visit again, we'll be able to do some more with them. We've been continuing to share posts with, from Breckland about registering to vote and postal vote registrations. I know it was highlighted quite a lot at our last by-elections that it was good to get information out, so we're continuing to do that. And I think I shared the last post today because the deadline is today for registration at midnight. And things about the public consultations from Breckland with the electoral boundaries and their local planning. Events are all being advertised across the What's On Breckland listings and other local events pages as well. And we're keeping our news and events pages up to date on the website. Offline, we've obviously had our printed newsletter that went out. We had 12,000 copies delivered and printed. They were handed out to the local community via their post boxes. And we've given some out to local groups as well, such as the Benjamin Vanation. And had some in the office as well for residents to pick up if they didn't get them. Next one will be sent out in October, November time, with our e-newsletter being sent out in between. Post sites are still being used. They're being updated by the venues team now. But we're just keeping an eye on them and making sure that they have the information from our town events as well as their events and community groups. And we're continuing to publish with other local magazines. We've had an editorial put into the New Marketplace magazine, which is from the EDP. They contacted us and said they wanted to do two pages for us. We helped them with some editorials and they also put some of our events into their What's On listings, which was great. So that went out to Thetford, Brandon, Watten and Swatford as well. And it was able to be picked up in, I think, some local supermarkets for free. Our press releases have gone out. They've been picked up by about Thetford and other newspapers. The EDP have picked them up and Very Free Press as well. But we're still sat on our 100% success rate for publications for our press releases at this point. In terms of communications, we drafted a market trader leaflet. I've been working with Nick and the team there to put together a leaflet that's got all the information about market fees, how to become a market trader, our rules and regulations, and just make it really clear to people. We're hoping that obviously that will be passed out through the office and also through, given to our local traders who, you know, they visit other markets, they might pass them out and share that information for people. It's also got our incentives listed in there, like the, I think, three months get free for it, should say, it's all saying that. And we've also distributed grazing leaflet. This was important because Nick has arranged some patrols in the areas with our grazers to try and reassure grazers in the area that we are keeping an eye on the cattle and soon to be, hopefully, sheep. They're being passed out for our security teams on there. And it's just helping to engage the public a bit more as to why we are grazing and the benefits of it and also the rules within the areas, emergency contact numbers if needed. You've obviously got all of your Meta and X, Twitter reporting on there. Still a positive growth. We've hit over our 3,000 follower mark, which was a bit of a push, but we finally got there. Were aiming for it for December, but unfortunately it took a little bit longer. But I think we're now about 3,000 and 15,000 this afternoon. Twitter's up to 331 followers. I'm aiming to push that over the 1,000, hopefully in the next few months. But it is a bit slower on there because our main response rate is definitely from Facebook. The same with Instagram. Instagram followers level is quite low, but we are reaching a higher audience through things. And we're going to look at doing some reels and before and aftershocks on there. And hopefully, they push up. Engagement's good again, sat 52%. And the posts are being shared quite widely. All of our photo posts are the most popular. Videos obviously do get quite a lot of response, but it's definitely the multiple photo ones. So we've spoken to the teams to make sure that they're using photos where their posts, they're getting more high-quality imagery because obviously if it needs to go to print for any press releases or anything like that. We just had a bit of a chat about how to compose your photos and the best ways to make sure that they're of good quality. And they are quite active at sending them through to me quite quickly. So we are getting stuff out as soon as we can, really. Top performing post for the D-Day, beacon lighting. Obviously, they've got massive reaction. We did film the whole lighting, so that was positive. And the heritage water refill station on Thetford Marketplace, they've got very, very good response from residents and it's being used well as well. Press releases coming up. We've got, we're working on partnership with Norfolk County Council on Thetford Bus Station projects. They are not wanting to put anything out during the election period, which is fine, but we're just drafting that ready. And then we're going to speak to their teams about someone coming down and getting some nice photos for that and getting that release out about our work that we're doing together once the plant is in. Right-to-play page, again, that's all drafted and ready to go. We're just waiting for a photo. And then schools project, so they're putting together a press release. We've also had a chat today about putting one together about all of the projects going forward with D-Day and all of the things the schools did alongside our main events. The Thetford Town Council website. So our website is being migrated over to a new provider. This is out of our control. It is from our current provider. They have taken out that part of their service. They don't do websites for councils anymore. So the new providers have contacted us. They will be speaking to us and arranging Zoom calls over the next few weeks to go through the full details of migration. They have completely ensured us that they will migrate over without any downtime or stopping in services and that it will be fully compliant at launch. It's just at the planning stages now, but hopefully it won't take too long and we will be active on keeping on top of that. Hopefully, it'll only be a couple of months at best, or most, sorry. The team are building it. I'm quite used to the council websites across UK. I think they've done over 100 for different councils. Some of the examples are listed there if you wanted to have a look. But actually, a few of them were what we used for best practice when looking at ours anyway. So we're actually quite pleased that they will be on board and we'll be talking to them about that. And hopefully, we'll speak to a few of you about just making sure we've got the right colour combinations and things going forwards and making sure it's all signed off as everybody's. That's it, any questions?
Lovely, thank you for that, Hazel.
Sorry, I rushed.
No, 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 it's really positive. And there's a lot of variety there, which is fantastic to see. You were quick, Terry.
David was quicker.
David was quicker. Well, David's hidden. Would you like to go first, Dave?
Actually, that was good. There's a lot in there. And yeah, I need to read it. That was great. Is there a cost of migrating this service or what?
So because it's our current providers, we've been in a package with them, aren't they? So they are migrating over for free. I don't know about the ongoing package. I'm assuming it'll be the same cost as we are looking at now, but we will speak to them about that and it will be.
But it's actually, we are a very low-grade support package and we've been moved away from them and they kept us at that level because we wouldn't have support. My understanding is that EU providers will offer some progress, they've got gold standard type reports, but we haven't been able to.
Right. And you mentioned the EU in there a couple of times. What are we doing with the EU?
EU?
Yeah. I misheard it in that case. I will read, I'll read it back.
That's okay.
Then I will ask you. Yeah, you mentioned the project with the EU and I wonder what that was, were EU schools?
The D-Day project the schools were doing. And there was a visit from a French school.
I'll read it.
I've already seen it, do you mind?
Thank you. Terry next, please.
Yeah, massive thanks. There's some really good stuff within that report. I'm very pleased with the newsletter. I think we've covered that before. And also massive thanks for doing that pack for the market traders. That's really appreciated. I think the engagement on Meta slash Facebook, X slash Twitter is really good. And the coverage on D-Day, as you said, was brilliant. It was really good. Just a little quibble. I was looking at the website yesterday. We still have, as of yesterday, the old committee structure on there. I wonder if you could update that or somebody could update that for us. That'd be brilliant, thanks.
Doug, please.
Yeah, firstly, I think that was really detailed and great to see so much on there. I just wanted to very quickly sense check. When you say, if I understand it correctly, the migration over to a new provider is essentially just the background stuff? Or is it the website being?
The whole website being rebuilt.
The entire website?
Yeah, so from what we understand, obviously, we still need to have the conversations with them, but it will be, it will be laid out like the new, like the new example ones they've sent.
Okay, so it's going to be basically, yeah.
So yeah, because it's to do with how they kind of set out their websites and how they run them, if that makes sense. If we can clarify that.
Have a sort of timing sense of that.
So we're starting at the moment, we've got the initial email, I think it was last week or the week before. So we're just setting up the initial calls to talk about the process, but we will share that and clarify that.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Thank you, Doug. Matt?
Just to thank you more than anything on yourself and the team's quick responses to people who comment on Facebook and your diligence in dealing with the more on-top breach community guidelines. So thank you for that. Well done. It seems a lot more positive on the chat, which is quite good.
Good. Terry?
Do the new website providers have anything to do with the previous ones? Or is it, no?
No, I don't believe so.
That's reassuring.
There are a separate standard, I can't, I don't know if they've worked on previously, but.
Any further questions on communications? No, just a couple from myself. The point about emails, the signatures being consistent, it's quite easy to overlook that, but I'm really pleased that that has happened. It goes back to sort of corporate identity and with the lanyards and with the email signatures and the website. So it might seem trivial, but actually it's really quite important. I'm pleased that's happened. The press releases, it's no easy task getting 100% success rate, but for every press release we've sent out to be covered in the EDP with a lovely photo, that's, it's our job to promote Thetford and to, you know, highlight what a good place it is. They're not going to do it for us. So I think that's a real achievement for the council and for you guys. You mentioned the rotunda. Really pleased to see you're keeping all the posters up to date and it looks much more colourful and welcoming. And I haven't yet spotted one that's out to date. So well done. You mentioned the success of D-Day. I think I only saw two questions on Facebook saying, what's going on for D-Day? Which is like about, you know, 100 times improvement on previous events. Facebook used to be full of people saying, what's going on? What's going on? We actually really communicated what the D-Day plans were this year, whether it's social media or in print. And I think that was one of the reasons the attendance was so good this year, because people are actually aware of what's going on. So I think that's really positive. The new market trader leaflets, can we make sure that councillors have those as well? I think a lot of us go to various markets and craft stalls, get talking to stallholders. You know, it's all of our job to try and get new market traders and, you know, that's quite important. In terms of press releases coming up, I know you want to hold back obviously because the election's on, which is fine. I'm still quite keen for us to get a press release out about the work on the Guildhall.
Yep.
We are spending, you know, something around £100,000 at least fixing the Guildhall, investing in probably one of the town's most significant heritage assets. And I think we need to tell people we're doing that. And similar vein, play areas. There was a post on Facebook today saying, oh, how lovely this play area is in Dis. Isn't it time we had one in Thetford? And so I messaged the person and said, do you realise we've spent over £100,000 as a town council in the last year alone, play areas? Of course, they don't because we haven't told them that. So it's good to promote the good things we're doing. £100,000 on play areas is a lot of money. £15,000 of that was on fixing vandalism, so probably won't want to promote that bit, but good. We'll have the cheque presentations coming up, no doubt, for unlocking Thetford's potential fund at some point as well. And in July, we'll have the judges' visit for the in Bloom. So that will be on the horizon as well. That's it. Before something else, love it.
Yes, I have, I'm sorry. The standardisation of signatures, I think is a really good idea. Does that apply to councils as well? And if not, should it?
So we did have this conversation. Obviously, we'll take your views on that. We, I think it would be a positive thing because it's all of our email links and things on it. But obviously, we do know that you run different, wear different hats at different times and whether it works from rise on, whether you want to have a look at that game.
I think given that we now wear, I'm chucking this out really, I think that now we wear lanyards and have badges and so on and so forth, we're seeking a, I'm not using the core, but we're seeking an identity, a brand. I think that would be very much part of it. I don't know if you have any other views?
Yeah, I can say, I, town councils, we are a town council. I could agree, standardisation makes sense as to how, when I use that email address that I'm always referring from.
At Norfolk, all councillor emails have the exact same signatures, partly for data protection, GDPR requirements and information and whatnot. So I think if you come up with something, I think that would be, you know, provide us with the text and we can all do that. I've got Matt then David, please.
Oh, I've got, do you mind? I've got a couple.
You're passionate about comments, Terry.
Well, I am. Who knew? Thank you so much for doing stuff with the posters. So that's a big thank you from me. I think it needed some work. I think some of them were not as great as others. So that's really part of it. Thank you for that. Yeah. And my last point is a bit of a maya culpa, apologies for me. The reason the market pack hasn't gone out is because I missed out the offer.
Thank you. Matt then, David.
Apologies if this shouldn't be comment section or personnel, I'm just sorry to bother you. And Hazel, not Hazel, Viola Hazel. Viola won her seat about a month ago. She still hasn't got email access. We got ours in about a week. Is there a reason? Why or can we?
I'm working with our providers. We have an ICT challenge and they are developing questionnaires for me to put up because if you use a town council tablet, it's very easy to get it out. If you don't use a town council tablet, there has to be some security considerations. So that's just slowing it down. I followed it up last week and they promised to give me a questionnaire so we could find out what all the councils do and then we'll do that. But I will follow up on her. I've also got all her name badges on sitting in my office, which I need to get up to as well.
I know you're busy, thank you. Thank you. David?
Yeah, just on the email front, I agree that we should all have the same signatures. I don't get emails. I wait for Annie, unfortunately, to send them on because my.
You get them.
Yeah, but I can't log on to it. It's so difficult logging on to me at Thetford Town Council. Breckland is easy, but Thetford Town Council, I have ever so much trouble logging on.
You can do it at home.
Yes, sorry, I can do it on the laptop. I can't do it anywhere else. I can't do it on in my office, I can't do it on here.
Here to restriction.
I think it might be. So what the recommendation would be, and I've got our ICT people to actually have a look at that, is that you use different browsers to get into different applications. So you, so for example, if you're in town council, you might use Edge or Firefox and then your other emails, you'd use that and that might be able to help you. But I know that I always have to apologise for being that, but I can assure you, our ICT people are really slow to respond. So they make me look like a roadrunner. So I will get onto them because I've had to prompt them to get onto that part of the subject.
When does our contract with them come up for renewal?
I think we have the 10th of May next year.
And do we have an option to bring that forward?
I think they scored, when they last scored, they scored the highest, I think everyone else got close to zero. So I'm not too sure we, they're very good at security and their support is actually fantastic. But it's just, we're dealing with MD and he's obviously not delegating enough, I can say those words, doubts his staff, so everything sits in the bottleneck in his desk.
Noted. But I shall bear that in mind in 12 months. Any further comments on? I have something to feel very outnumbered on this one. Moving on to 105 in your report, which is the personnel report. Adam?
We keep the training up to date and you'll see that there's a load of training going on, particularly within the technical town team and people associated with the venue. So if you look at the bottom there, you'll see all the costs at the level two, health and safety and training, risk management and assessments. So that we're actually quite pleased with. And I think it's again, getting, making sure all the staff are really trained and skilled in that particular area. And we also create resilience, which has been a failure that we've had for quite a while. So that's really there. We need to obviously revisit certain training for councillors and plan, set the phase two because we were going to do some case studies and then sit down with the planning and Breckland planning and they would say to us, well, if you'd answered your submitted your planning application in this particular way, you might, you know, we might have responded differently or added more value to your comments. So that will get going hopefully next month. I did have followed Breckland to get some dates for that. In terms of recruitment, Tuck Lock recruitment has been finalized. Tuck Lock started on 12th of August. As in the report, I'd been told it was the 15th, but on Friday I got told it's actually the 12th of August. And the other thing that we've been very successful at, we had two sets of interviews for an amenities assistant. We got nowhere. We've now actually managed to find someone who started work and has done a fantastic job. You know, really showed up our contractors. So we're just at the stage now where we'll put a notice to our existing contractors and we'll have someone in-house to do that with this proper support. And then over time, we still have to outsource the weekend, but over time we'll.
Lovely, thank you very much. I think that last bit is incredibly positive news because we really struggled to recruit for the amenities side of stuff. And the public looers have been paying for at least two or three years. So we actually finally managed to address that one. I think that'll be really positive. Word on the street is the toilets are significantly cleaner the last few weeks. So that's good news. Any questions on anything personnel related from the report there? Terry?
Just a comment really. I think it's really encouraging the amount of training that's going on.
Yeah, I thought that.
And in the end, it's the safest money, isn't it? It's paying money to save it. I think it's a really good thing and it's very warm winter sector. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10624, which is the final financial report for the last financial year, ended 31st of March. We had a quick look at the draft last month and there's been a couple of sort of tweaks. Do you just want to take us through that one as well, Anna?
We ended up the year surplus. We barely, we just made it with £750. And I think the reason, we were expecting a bigger surplus, but it was the open space management cost that came and really fit us in February and March, where we had to get that worked out before the season. Just to go back to some of the other issues, we've, our income has been, has been good. We've had a lot of project income coming in and I think we've got to do an exercise even at the for the last meeting, we've got to match some of the income with the projects and all the project reporting and just show how all that money that we've received has been spent. But the other issue that, the most important issue that came out was the bad debts. And I didn't realise it was so high, but I put a table into the financial report. There's a number of reasons for that. We had a severity debt of £405. That just ended up over in non-residency charges because if you're resident in Thetford, you pay half or you pay a certain amount. And if you're not a resident of Thetford, you pay double that. And over this particular transaction, there was such a lot of time that posted us cheques, the postal checks that were carried through and time we actually got to the bottom of this and it took months and months, we realised that they had paid the wrong amount. We've been disputing them to spend the money to go recover that amount, it's not worth it. But if they ever come and want to do work with us, we will make sure that the controls are placed and that we try and recover that. The market traders, I mentioned this at the last meeting, we had a misappropriation of money from staff members. They were rolling money from over. So they're receiving money one day, keeping it and then doing whatever they did and getting money from another market trader, they were rolling it over. We had, that got, that was actually in the last one actually, so before May 2023. My very first meeting with the new council, new mayor and the chair, as I had explained this, that it actually happened. There were a lot of pressures on us. People had mental illness and all sorts of things. So we just did it a little bit slowly. For Coxon Road, Community.
Sorry about that. And immediately they said they can't be put into dormancy. I've been following them up every few months and they're still optimistic that the money will come through. But I can't carry a debt of four years and years. So I've just decided to prove it. If we get the money back, that'll be great. The big number there is a property renter and we had a big dispute with one of our tenants. We actually, the building was, they were unable to trade in the building. And what happened is we had a long dispute. They ended up doing a lot of things, but they were unable to use their building for the purposes. We had, we, our, the contractors finished our work at a point in time. And immediately we were supposed, they were supposed to pay a higher rent, but that was very unrealistic because they couldn't trade. So they still had to put back everything in place. At the end of the day, this is the element of my area here because I actually thought this might have been built and resolved. And then I discovered that it hadn't been, that there'd been no communication. I was adamant that I'd sent letters and entered into the negotiation. So we just stuck here because this goes back two years, two and a bit years. The organisation questioned, had been paying their rent and they're actually are battling. So this could be the difference between them closing down. So I put it here. I'm sure the internal auditors are going to raise this as. Putting it here. And then the last, the last one is the hire for £225,000. That really was to do with a hire that went into liquidation. We haven't pursued that at all. It's unlikely that we're going to receive any money. And that's really, if there's been no fundamental changes in the finances over, if I go back, if I had to take the reports from July last year and compare it, the trends have been very similar. So I won't go through it. Venues and markets are down. The old venues and markets are down. Immunities is down. The personnel have been up because of the savings in salaries budgets.
Yeah. Thank you, Alan. David?
The next paragraph was an overspend of 30,000. Are we going to have an explanation for that? How it's happened? How did we spend 22,000, 21,000 on one and vehicle leasing costs of nearly over nine? Did we notice that was coming along in that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that relates to the amenities committee as was, and we were very conscious of the overspend in the committee. Fortunately, there were significant underspends elsewhere. So the overall budget, there is an underspend, which allowed us to do that work. I actually made a note of it in my papers here. We've spent £70,000 on open space maintenance in the last financial year. A large part of that is hacking back stuff from Castle Park, but also Barnham Common. And frankly, because not enough has been done over the last five to 10 years, this is, you know, legacy issues that we're having to deal with. We are required to manage those spaces under a management plan by Natural England. And it just hasn't been done to the right standard. So we've been playing catch up. So I'm hoping it won't be as bad in future years.
Has the budget been amended to make sure we don't have an overspend next year? We hope.
If I can. Our biggest risk is getting grazers. That's why you have seen in the communication report, we really are going flat out to get grazers onto our, onto our open space land. Because that's the saviour. One of the reasons why the open space went way over that was because we didn't, we couldn't get grazers. And so we really are trying. So if you see Nick, please don't ask him about grazers. Because I think he might have a breakdown because he spends his days, I mean, I, you know, 10 cat steps every day. And he is really distraught about the fact that we just can't do anything about it. So that's the risk and our vehicle leasing is a bit of a risk. We had old vehicles. We had the most inefficient system. So we had a work team out. If someone needed to come to the office, they'd have to pick up someone else. Two people would have to come back to the office. Productivity was crazy. So we are incurring client costs, but we're hoping to move that.
You've changed.
We have changed.
The big thing.
Yeah. Yeah. I think for those of us that are on amenities, we talk about open space management a lot. We could throw £100,000 at land we own and it still wouldn't solve the problem. It will be over a period of time. It's not going to be a Mac in six months.
That's lovely. All right. Thanks. It would just took change. So I gather it would have been long term.
Yeah, no, very much. I mean, we are fortunate in one sense, but it's a disadvantage in another. We own a lot of land as a town council. And that is increasingly expensive to look after. It's as simple as that. So we have to bear that in mind when we set budgets. And financially and from a conservation point of view, grazing is the best way to deal with that. But we just can't get the graziers for a variety of reasons. Partly because Thetford's got a bad reputation in the grazing world, because there's sheep attacks on Barnham Common. You know, they lose so many sheep through sort of, you know, dog attacks and that sort of thing. We've struggled to recruit a grazer. I have half in the last jokingly said, we need to buy our own sheep. But I think that is one of the things we're going to have to look at because we just can't get a grazer.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you for the question. I think open space maintenance is one legacy issue. But I get the sense, Alan, of the bad debts report, we're sort of mopping up a few legacy issues there, which is fine. Because we've ended the year with an underspend and we can absorb those costs. So I think that's good news. I can see in there where you've put controls tightened. Are you confident with all of those bad debts that we won't see a repeat of those issues?
I am more than confident. I think what we've, we introduced a credit control policy at the beginning of the financial year. So these were outside of that. And I mean, and I think some of the other change, for example, there's no cash markets. So that change has come in. Everything is done by credit card. So the opportunity to roll cash and to do that has passed. And our credits, our severity, what we were doing is we were giving credit to anyone who just phoned up and said, I want a memorial. That's now good. If they're not a trusted trader, if I can use that, that word, a trusted payer in the past, they have to go through a credit evaluation system. We do not allow people to have credit, they have to pay in advance and then we have to.
With the new structuring being put in place that we're looking at now for the HR people, are you confident you'll get more support in what you do to take some of the pressure off you to pull this together? We all know how much work you put in.
No, no, I think we will. If we can get, you know, we're further developing. I think the lack of job descriptions or inappropriate job descriptions have actually contributed a lot to this, where people definition. So if you look at the severity administrative, a new job description, and that hasn't been approved yet. But what that does is it actually puts a little bit of financial emphasis there. You know, you've got to actually compile the credit control policy etc. So I think it will.
Great. Thank you. So in short, we've spent a small fortune on open space management. We've tidied up some historic bad debts. We've put 25 grand into unlocking Thetford's potential and we've finished the year with a surplus of 755 pounds.
Please excuse the sentence on that report there because that is incorrect. It's said at episode of 3302. I'd actually duplicated two transactions on the income expenditure. The expenditure was greater and I didn't realise that it's all right at the end. So I do apologise. The surplus is 755 pounds.
Yeah, very well done. Lovely. So item 106, can I have a proposal in a second to approve the financial report? Harry Land and seconded?
Yeah, anyone.
David, thank you very much. Moving on to item 107, the final schedule of reserves. To receive and discuss the schedule of reserves for the year ending 31st of March. And not surprisingly, this is very much linked to the budget. Anything you want to add to the report, Alan, that was circulated?
No, this, the same report was circulated at the last meeting and it hasn't changed. So.
Thank you.
There were no changes needed.
Any questions from anybody? We've topped up some reserves and spent some others. It's kind of how it works. Terry?
Yeah, just a little one. I see we spent £14,000 plus on computers, office furniture, sound system. I assume we're going to be spending more on the sound system.
If we go for the outside area, I think at the heritage, it's a target that's going to hire sound equipment. Not that you actually buy, because if you leave it up permanent hiring equipments outside, you have the weather issues and secondly, you've got.
Yeah, yeah.
It's got vandalisation. So it will be, we'll require, the cost of hire is actually not that significant.
Okay. I was thinking more in terms of internal.
Internal, we've got the last bit. We've got to do is sound person in. Just to check this surrounding there. We'll do some experimentation before next week, next week's Tuesday.
That's what I want.
Yeah. Thank you, Terry. David?
Didn't I just see something on the election costs?
Yes.
Yep, £20,969 for the last May election.
To the last?
Last May for the full town council election.
I just thought you were the last, you know, a few weeks ago.
No, that will come on this. Do we know what the final cost of that was?
Oh, we haven't been in the book.
Can I have a proposal in a second to adopt the schedule of reserves? Matt and someone other than Terry? Annie, thank you very much. I like variety.
Yeah, okay.
Item 108, the internal control review and annual governance statement. That was in your pack. You've seen this for the first time last year. So this is the second time we're seeing it, but it's something the committee has to approve every year. Anything you want to add to that report, Alan?
Should write to sign it. I'm still waiting for councillor Beretta to sign this and then, and then that's be done. I think what we've done is we've just highlighted some of the historical issues. Controls are never perfect. We have to always respond. And I think we've got a nice approach to doing that. To steadily evolving and setting up controls around the assertions. But I think the one thing that you can be certain of is that as a council, I'm fairly confident and based on the councillor writing, councillor's Beretta's thing, is you can sign the annual government statement because all the assertions, they're satisfied that we've actually done sufficient work. Have sufficient controls to support that.
In short, as part of a number of internal control procedures, two councillors are asked to complete an internal review. I don't think it's a requirement that they can't be a member of the finance committee, but historically we've tried to choose people that are not members of the as was finance committee. And we went with Stuart for his finance background and Carla is a councillor not on finance. And basically they just have to probe the internal control procedures and I hope ask you lots of questions, Alan.
Bit of a, very honest. I volunteered a lot of information that I think you would have asked for. Councillor Tim, that is also part of that if you make it.
Good. So subject to Carla's signature being obtained, we just need to adopt this. And is this a recommendation to?
A recommendation for council. I have to go through for council.
Yeah. Can I have a proposal please? David and a seconder, Mike Brindle, all in agreement? Thank you very much. Saw you flinch then Terry. Item 109, annual accounting statement. To review and approve the annual accounting statement as part of the AGAR report for council.
This is really just the finances. This is what gets published. This is what goes out. So the public have the right to come and ask us questions about this. It's really different to the financial report that we tabled earlier on in this meeting. Because there's certain accounting rules that apply to this that don't apply to conventional accounting. So if you look here, we've made a surplus, we've actually made a massive significant loss of £150,000. We had a significant loss last year of £120,000 between the balance line item one and line item seven. And it's just the way that the accounting is done.
Is that because of the use of reserves or was it investment?
It is that, for example, we have investment gains on investment. We have to reverse that out because it's not a payment or it's not a receipt. So there's a whole lot of accounting things. Contribution to reserves don't feature in here as an expenditure. So there's a whole lot of changes that we have to do with them. We have to, basically we have to convert our actual accounting, which is what we produce all our budgets and our financial reports on, we've converted back to cash accounting. And this is basically a cash counter for, so we have to reconcile box seven with box eight, which is how do we reconcile our reserves and our surfaces to our bank accounts?
Okay. And where it says total fixed assets plus long-term investments. I assume we've not reassessed the value of our fixed assets and the difference there from the two years would be solely due to investments?
No, the difference is actually assets that we've acquired. What happens is that we account for investments at the original cost. So we don't, we don't change any valuation. And what that would be is, is we account for all assets. Historically, we didn't account for assets at all. We ended a revaluation and accounted for all the assets there. So we have schedules in the accounting department that show how they got to those values. They've got a value into values that Peters, this build and everything else and our playbox. And then from that point on, we've actually been accounting for assets at historical costs.
Right.
So if you have a look at the reserve statements, you'll see that we scheduled money on assets. And that should be the difference between we spent, oh, that's what, it was £40,000, it might be, should be the difference. Between £40,139 on assets and hopefully it's not quite, but I'll work out why. So I can do a reconciliation of that for order purposes.
Okay. So a lot of that would be office equipment and that sort of thing?
Yes, yeah. But the difference is quite, I'll have a look at that.
Just curious.
I'll have the answer ready for you.
Well, I only ask because at Norfolk County Council audit, they have to obviously reassess the value of their fixed assets quite regularly. But I assume we don't, as you've just said, we don't routinely reassess. Right, I'll shut up now because I think everyone's bored. Are you happy committee to approve the AGAR statement? The recommendation to full council. Proposed by councillor Brindle, seconded by councillor Mitchell. Thank you very much, Adam. Did you see a move? All in agreement? Thank you. You'll be pleased to know that that's the finance bits dealt with. Those of you that are new to the committee, these only come up on an annual basis. So don't worry too much. Moving on, item 110, legal opinion on public attendance at meetings.
Before we go into this, should, feel free to tell me now, should this not be below the line item only because if we're discussing. We may have to use situational based examples in a minute, but we're looking at a way forward. I don't want anyone in the public to find out on a YouTube video before we may have to consult with them themselves individually.
The committee can move to take it below the line if that is what you would want to do. Set up a proposal.
If, if, if.
Do you think perhaps? Are members happy for that item to go below the line given its other legal nature? Agreed. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 111, CCTV quotes for the Guildhall and workshop. To review and approve quotes for CCTV in the Guildhall and workshop.
What we've done is we've gone out to three suppliers. We've looked at, one of the reasons we've looked at the workshop is because we are buying more equipment and we are probably going to have to buy more equipment. So we actually need security there. At the moment, we have to park all our vehicles over here. Actually, if we have in the bed or something like that, it's actually very difficult. So the CCTV at the workshop will help us. We've got quite a bit of equipment there. We've got a tractor there. We've got all that. And it really will help us there. So we included that in. The Carnegie Guildhall is the three quotes for that. And we have three suppliers accredited for that. You can see the prices there. The workshop, we only had two suppliers quotes. Supplier B didn't charge for the, for the workshop. And we've done one or two adjustments to make sure that we're comparing like or like. Like example on supplier B, supplier C, they put certain things as optional extras, which supplier A had put into their price for the workshop. So we just included that because that's what we actually need. We don't just need in the yard, we also need in the common market at the symmetry. So those are the three quotes that we've received. We've also got maintenance agreements for, which we've looked at for a five-year period. Supplier A is, is an annual cost of £141, supplier C, £200, and supplier B didn't provide the maintenance cost.
Okay. On the basis that supplier B hasn't provided a quote for the workshop or a maintenance cost, would it be appropriate to discount them because they're not meeting the criteria that we need?
I think so because we're going to need something for the workshop.
So it's between A or C. David? David?
What's the difference between what supplier A put in the Guildhall, Carnegie, and supplier C? The works yard are similar sort of costs, but the Guildhall Carnegie is significantly different. What, what's the difference?
Um, we've checked it because the quotes, the, the, uh, the cameras are all, they put cameras in exactly the same place.
Same quality cameras?
Same quality, same spec, all sound related cameras, all the particular areas, uh, unofficial.
Um, if I may make, make a suggestion, I think it's fair to say that councils are considered in certain circles to be a bit of an easy target, aren't they? And I suspect that was what was going on there, David.
Well, I'm happy to go with supplier A. Um, it's like a no brainer in a way.
Is that a proposal, councillor Blackpool?
Yes, councillor Jimmy.
Very much. Is there a seconder?
I, I can say that, but we, I don't, here we identify which quotes go with and funding at the same time.
David's proposing we go with supplier A.
Is there a separate one for the source of funding or are we putting these two together?
No, so it's all in, so the, um, recommends the obvious equipment reserve is used to pay for it, which seems perfectly reasonable.
I can second that then, could you?
Based on, I think. Proposed by David, seconded by Doug, that we go with supplier A at a cost of seven thousand three hundred and thirty one pounds. Are you all in agreement? Agreed.
Maintenance cost.
Thank you. Um, David didn't ask, but, um, the one for the Guildhall, does that include audio?
Yes.
I did ask.
Did you?
Yeah, I did.
Sorry, I didn't hear. Uh, right. One one two, mechanism to monitor staff interests. Uh, this came out of a committee last week. Uh, and it's to discuss how best to record staff interest in contracts to promote transparency. And I know you've been doing a bit of work on this, Alan.
Um, what we've got is at the moment is, we do have some requirements. Our employment contract states that, uh, um, we have to vote on our type of specific work, uh, uh, duties under the contract. And the staff handbook has a whole lot of, of, uh, requirements. Uh, but it doesn't actually, it's a very reactive type, type, uh, um, process to, 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 to do that. There's some, the emphasis is on the employee to, I recognise situations where conflicts might arise. And you might have situations where they're not in a position to do that. So all I've done is I've actually made a suggestion for the committee to consider that just like councils would do it, where you do it once every five years. We, we as staff should actually do it once a year. We should actually give the town clerk a register of our interests. Uh, uh, so the town clerk is in a position, be aware of what procurement is taking place and then can then identify a flag, uh, conflicts of interest before they happen, rather than someone saying, well, I don't know because it's, if, if you do it the other way around. But that's really what, 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 what the recommendation is. Uh, the only caveat I've put there is that, is that we've got H R consultants at the moment. So it's to actually use them to get the wording right and we put it into our, into our, uh, staff contracts because that would be appropriate. Last thing I would do is, uh, we end up in a proven tribunal for, um, in, in a appropriate, uh, contracts.
Yeah. I think, I think the emphasis is on the word transparency because what we don't want to do is imply that there's anything necessarily wrong with using, um, companies linked to staff. We're a small town. Everybody's got, uh, friends, family, whatever, that run different businesses. But the transparency bit is key. So as long as there is a process in place to record those interests, it doesn't necessarily mean that we won't be using those interests, but actually it's important for a transparency point of view. Um, it actually came up, um, uh, recently because, um, the H R consultants helped with the contract for the new town clerk and there was some better wording than our current, but I think this goes over and above, um, e- even the new contract. Any questions or comments on what Alan's proposed? It seemed perfectly reasonable to me.
Well done.
Matt, does that satisfy? Because you were the one that raised this last week.
Uh, yes, thank you. I think as you've just said as well, the aim isn't to, to catch people and stop using them. I just think we are held for a standard of transparency when we join the council to find any interest. I expect the same of the staff. And also you say to catch before hand, which is excellent, but I don't expect people to list down my brother's cousin is a painter. You know, I bought, should we go out to tender and they apply, then they should be added to the list and say things like that. But it's, it's ever evolving, things like that.
It defines it as the member of staff or their spouse or civil partner. So I mean, there's a definition as to who should be declared.
Do you not think we should broad?
I, I would, uh.
Yes.
Uh, I, I think immediate family.
Immediate family.
Uh, with me, so.
No, please, Andy.
I literally use the same wording that's in the, uh, councillor ones, which is all interests. And I'll then define that. That will be defined in the, in the books. So the, the councillor wants his appointments and registerable interests.
Could we, um, uh, amend it to say, uh, spouse or civil partner? Um, or any relative that the member of staff feels necessary to declare?
I think that's too vague.
Okay.
Um, I'd be to go along with it, but I think that is a little bit too vague.
It's, sorry.
Sorry, Matt, this is not something, uh, that H R can tell a better place to find the exact wording because I, I, I'm sort of like, I'm finding my guess. Like, I don't think it's any more vague than you'd say. Yeah, it's not for us.
No, I mean, Matt knows better than I do on this one. You know, you're the people.
If, if we can look at adding into it, um, the adding of, I'm trying to think of the words. I'm trying to, the best way to switch. You just said I'm the one better to answer and I forgot the word. But we are spot on.
Black and white.
Whilst we say immediate family or whatever in the initial, but should we put, for example, if someone's brother was part of the supplier A company for the CCTV, can we add that as a later date? Can we have something that adds? And should a relative put in for tender?
Yeah.
Then they will be added just for transparency reasons.
I think the problem is if we're going to make it, um, we can't make it be ambiguous. So, uh, your definition of immediate family might vary to somebody else's. So it needs to be defined.
There, there is a H R term for immediate families. One up, one left, one down.
Okay. Can I suggest that, because this is something new, that we start off with the wording that's there? And I think the idea to base it on the same principles as councillors, I think is very valid. I, I'd hate to think that there are two different types of declarations that need to happen. Um, so let's keep it the same. Um, and then if we need to amend it at a later date, we do. But this is significantly better than what we've got in place at the moment. Uh, can I have a proposal and a second for that one? Matt and Terry all in agreement? Thank you. I'm glad you got to move, Doug. I'm feeling like in the sun here. We need some curtains on the other window.
So, yeah, just to keep this home here.
No, you're all right. I'm just sitting here in sweat. Um, item one one three, correspondence, to note any correspondence received. There is none. Action points to review and discuss the action points carried forward from the previous meeting of the Corporate Services Committee. There you go. Find my action points.
Have been some brought forth from other committees. Uh, we actually did make a lot of progress last month.
We did.
It's actually been shortened.
I'm just going to quickly go through these. Are there any, Alan, that you think we need to be noting tonight and possibly removing?
Seven act one. That task has been completed.
Okay, this is in relation to market trader fees and card payments. That's been actioned. And it was confirmed that a visit to Swaffham Market.
That's taken place.
That's taken place. So we can remove that one entirely.
Um, the updated market rules, I think there's some progress. This is part of the market pack. In fact, it is part of the market traders pack. So that's, there's been some progress in that. It just needs to be signed off.
Okay. And the, uh, one there about Stanleyforth and moving away from Stanleyforth, where were we at with, uh, the old council chamber? Dare I ask, seeing as we're in June?
I had a meeting with the, uh, D W Stanleyforth clerk, uh, last Friday, but I ended up with more tasks than I think is in my action points. So, so we are, we're really going to, uh, address that. I hope you try to get a meeting going. One of the instructions to this committee was that we actually sit down, do an inventory, work out where things are, where they need to go. And I'll try to set up that meeting and it's mainly my fault that it hasn't happened. We just, there's days and days in the weekend that.
That's fine. The, the, the risk is that we'll be hit with a bill for rent that we haven't budgeted.
Very good.
Has there been some negotiation with Stanleyforth about that? Or we're just going to suck it up?
I think there's a couple of favors that, that, that Stanleyforth will expect of us. So I think we, we've got a little bit of negotiation.
Okay, good.
To do.
Is that anything, sorry, is that anything that any of us could get involved in and, and help with?
I, I think, I think we should get a lot of this recommendation to, 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 to the committee and it's really just getting that done. I think we have, we're trying to set up a little working group, uh, uh, and the council, I'm quite happy to invite councillors. I think they could be very valuable, uh, to attend and we can actually go and do some discussions and get some ideas.
Do you want to set that up then?
I'll do so.
Some of them.
After the fourth of July, David's very busy.
Yes, we know that.
Does anyone have any questions on any of the other action points that are there? Yep. As I said, we went through these in quite a lot of detail last month and we did take quite a few off and, uh, some of them are in progress. So it will be off at some point. Item one one five, community engagement to agree, uh, discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. Is there anything that we've discussed this evening that somebody would like a press release about?
I'm just beginning. We was discussing part of the page's update. We talked about putting something out there about a part of it. No, that's not press release. Sorry, I'm going that. So here.
Thank you. Terry?
Um, yeah, I was just wondering, um, if we leave those until fourth of July?
Yes, good. Thank you. Uh, one one six, committee officers update to discuss any information since the agenda was released?
Um, one of the things that we didn't put through Heritage and Town Events last week was the Christmas lights tender. So that we have to go out and, and, and do that. So that got published today because we started to run out of time. As a standard tender, we've made no changes to the historical tender of the last three years, the last three tender times for the last nine years. Uh, so that has been issued. We will be going to the Heritage and Town Events Committee to get that evaluated at the end of July. So I do apologise that this is the first time you're hearing it, but it was supposed to be on the Heritage and Town Events, uh, uh, last week.
And essentially that's a tender to put the lights up and then take them down again.
For three years.
For three years.
Any other updates, Alan?
Uh, no.
No. So item one one seven, to consider resolving that pursuant to the public body's admission to meetings at nineteen sixty. The press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. There are two items remaining, the first one being salaries, which is a personnel item. And the second being the earlier item, which is legal related. Are you all happy that we exclude the press and public? Thank you very much. In practical terms, that means stop the recording.
Yeah.
For the hundreds of press that.